Another year, and hopefully we will take advantage of that and have more meaning and more purpose in terms of what we do while we yet live. So let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we're just so grateful and so thankful to you for this another day. This is the day that you have made, and we have already made up our mind that we shall rejoice and be glad in it. We thank you, Lord God, for this year, and we just ask that you would just lead us and guide us in our steps, Father God. Individually, collectively, in this body, help us, Lord God, to be about the business of serving you, and we do that, Lord God, by serving others. So we just thank you for this day and for all that you have planned for us for 2024. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Today, we will hear from Sheriff Derek Cunningham, Grants Administrator Regina Walker, and Community Corrections Executive Director Phil Bryant. The items that will be considered during the formal session, presentation of the FYI 2023 County Rebuild Alabama Annual Report by the Engineering Department, a resolution to obligate funding to the Consolidated Homeless Service Center Community Partners to mitigate the negative impact of the pandemic, adoption of new floodplain development ordinance, amendment number one to a contract with Martin Environmental Services for the Clean Saturday Refuge Collection, will consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies.
Florence, I don't know if the commission, I think y'all, we got a text about honoring Sheriff Cunningham. Y'all want to do that together, have a table together, or how y'all want to do that?
You know, I'm always for honoring Sheriff Cunningham. So, yeah.
She rose to hero.
Yeah.
What is she rose?
That's a female. That is a female. Instead of being a hero, she's a shero.
So you went from being a shero to a hero? I didn't dream of a flyer.
I think, I think he's the hero. Yep, yeah, I was going to do it, so I'm good, I'm good on that.
Yeah, how much is it?
Hundred a piece? What was the table?
Six hundred.
Table six hundred?
Six hundred.
All right. Hundred and a quarter a piece.
I'm saying, correct, it's five hundred. It's five. Table ten is five.
Well, we're talking about an appropriation for services by what organization?
Duchess and Divas. So we're supporting Duchess and Divas.
We've done them before.
Right.
We're not purchasing.
So it's a hundred dollars a piece from each, from my agency?
From agency.
Which we have, I think we have about four hundred and thirty-seven dollars in the joint. Y'all want to use that? And then, let's just do that. Can we do that, Florence? Do the four thirty-seven, empty that?
It's four fifty-seven.
Four fifty-seven.
We got more.
So let's use that four fifty-seven. Of course, you ain't got to that point yet, but let's use that four fifty-seven, and then, if we want to make up the difference, though.
I'll make up the difference, but I.
I can help make, I'll split that with you, Dan, and make the difference.
Like ten dollars a piece?
You can, you can have it.
Okay.
She can have it.
So forty-three dollars from your agency.
Now, the cookie jar is empty.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education. There are none at this time. Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue. Consider a bid award to Move &amp; Store LLC, DBA Admiral Movers, to deliver, set up, and retrieve election equipment. Consider travel training requests for the County Commission, the detention facility, the Revenue Commissioner, and the Sheriff's Office. That's all the items.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have a question about the homeless initiative that we're doing. I think Terry told us last meeting that there were no beds, additional beds being made available as a result of this, this ARPA funding. I'm really not clear on what it is that we're, we're trying to address homelessness, but how do we, how we're doing that if we're not making any additional beds available?
Yeah, I am too. I share your concern. I was, I was hoping Terry was going to be here today. Is she scheduled to be here today?
Looked like I read something that, that we're going to be something that, I'm not sure. I wish you were here.
Well, now, I talked to Ms. Tara Davis over the holidays, because she called me, and, no, she said that right now with them, I guess, you know, when they came to us for the plea, for the help, they were so far behind that they're trying to just barely keep the doors open now that they have. And the map that we gave them, I think their map was cut down in that?
Mm-hmm.
And, yeah, so it will not increase her beds. She's wanting to increase them, but that part will not increase because of the amount was, her amount, the amount that she's giving.
The amount that's coming from this appropriate, this allocation here?
Mm-hmm.
So, and has each one of these entities actually demonstrated that they were negatively impacted by the pandemic?
Well, she, I know she has, and I know Mercy House has too, hadn't they, Doug?
Yeah, they all have, but I, I share Vice Chairman Sankey's concerns a little bit. I would like to have a little more information, I think, to know kind of how the money's going to be used, where it's going to be. It says here, it's, they list about ten different partners, but I'd really love to see which partners are getting what and what services they're providing. Do we know that information, or?
We, we have, we have that information. We do have a budget. We're waiting on a more detailed budget from each of the partners.
That's what I want.
And so what we have now is a generalized budget based on the parameters that we kind of set. When we, you know, just to give you some background, you know, we have two million dollars set aside for this program. So when we, they submitted a budget, at the time, we were kind of thinking, one organization, when we got proposals from both the Beacon Center and the MAP Center.
This was, let me interrupt, in response to the RFP that went out.
Yes.
Okay.
We got response from both of those entities. We felt like both of them provided great services that we needed to put together. So that's how we came to this agreement that we have now of the Beacon Center will be the fiscal agent, and they'll provide healthcare services. The MAP Center, with the organizations under its roof, will provide services, you know, wraparound services, well, as, as well as the rapid rehousing piece, which is a key piece. There are no, currently, there are no beds in this, additional beds, but what we feel is a strength is the ability for the rapid rehousing, which can get people put in a, in a situation, if they're stable enough to, to take care, take that situation. We have had some discussion about what do, what do additional beds look like in the community, and we, we have been told that there are some organizations that are kind of working toward getting some additional bed facilities, but it's just nothing that's concrete right now. So I think Terry has been working with these organizations to get more information, more firm budget numbers, because, as Commissioner Moore Ziegler stated, the initial number that we had from Friendship was going to be for rehab and addition, to add more beds, but with the fiscal status that they're in currently, that was not going to be feasible. I mean, even if they didn't have the reduction, I don't think it was going to be feasible for them to take that amount and start trying to do rehab, knowing that their operations are going to suffer based on their current fiscal status. So we can get you that information, and Terry and Susan can also get you some further information about what that program looks like and, you know, how it plans to take shape and help people in Montgomery.
Kendall, do you know, the, the one million ARPA funds says to support the launch of the Consolidated Homeless Service Center. Who's the money going to? Is it going to Beacon Center, to MAP, and they're going to distribute it, money, or?
It's MAP.
So it's going to, is, the money is awarded to the Beacon Center and MAP. The Beacon Center is going to be the fiscal agent.
So they'll get, they'll get the entire one million, then?
Two. One from the city, one from the county. Correct. And so basically, it's on a reimbursable basis. You know, you do the work, you submit your invoices, you know, the Beacon Center checks them, make sure everything's right with them, send out, you know, sends out the funds. So the Consolidated Homeless Center will be housed at the MAP Center. So that's where a lot of your organizations will be housed inside of the MAP Center. They are, you know, they'll have offices, they'll have staff people there. The key point about this is all of these organizations that we're discussing are regional. So, you know, if, the Beacon Center will help somebody in private, but these organizations, this program is going to be specific to Montgomery homeless and Montgomery County. So the people that are going to be placed in the hub that they're calling the, at the MAP Center are going to be, you know, specifically detailed in helping people that are in Montgomery. So, and the, the point was being able to get a person that comes off the street, you know, and have basically their paperwork flow with them through all of these agencies. They don't have to go anywhere else to get help and to get service and to kind of find out some things. Of course, if they need healthcare, they need to go to the Beacon Center. We've talked with the Beacon Center and the MAP Center. They're working with Montgomery Area Transits, and to figure out, hey, what's the quickest way to get these people here, and, you know, most affordable way to get these people here of, you know, outside of them having to arrange or take people there. So that's the key point about this, really focusing in on Montgomery homeless versus regional homeless people.
One stop, in a one stop.
And having, and in a one-stop aspect, to where you don't have to send people, whether, you know, it could be across the street. You really want people to go to one place, get everything they need, get their, all their information in the system, and just, you know, have all of these organizations take a look at them and see how they can help provide service.
But still a voluntary program, so.
Yes, still voluntary.
If I choose not to participate, I.
That is correct, and I, you know, one of the other things that we've discussed in launching this program is putting this information out to the media, letting the media know that these services are out here. Sometimes people don't take advantage of these services because they don't know where to start. But we feel like if we explain to people that we've got all of these places and one, you know, all these organizations in one place that can help you today, this is where you need to go, then that's something that we can take advantage of, and that's something that will get the people the help that they need in a more efficient timeframe.
I like the idea of the one-stop shop, but I, I'm still concerned that there are no additional beds, and so I think we're going to still have a challenge with that. Now, did you say that Friendship Mission could not stand on their own with the proposal for ARPA funding? Did you, they did submit a proposal?
Yes, they did submit a proposal within this proposal. That original amount was, I think, three hundred thousand dollars. Some of that was going to be operating, but a good bit of it, a good bit of it was going to be for rehab, and it was going to give them, I think, an additional sixteen beds. Again, that is before we knew they were in the fiscal status that they were. So I think at, at any given point, they were going to have to change the way they were going to have to use those funds.
But they've been cut back, correct? They're not getting the three hundred, correct?
Now, they're, they're down to two hundred.
Right, so they're, they're, they've been, they were cut, the money was cut back on there. So as a result, because she and I talked, and I pledged some of the money, the money that we're getting, I pledged some of mine to help her with getting some additional beds.
So two hundred of that will go to?
Two hu- hundred of it, well, some of, most of it now will go to operation and keeping services, because you got to understand, she offers services due now. She makes sure that people that, especially the veterans, that they get to work. She does that out of that. She hires a driver to take them back and forth every day to work.
And that's why she should have had a more substantial portion of it, and I, I did hear your explanation for maybe why she didn't get it, but it seems like they could have stood on their own, for their own allocation, and, and we would have had more bed space and more efficient operation when it comes to addressing homelessness.
Yes, sir. So part of the, part of the discussion in the very beginning was bringing these, all of these entities together. And the city has been kind of the chief, even before the ARPA funds came about, the, the city has kind of been driving about how do we get homeless organizations to come together under one roof and do one thing and help more people that way? I'm not, and so, you know, the MAP Center with MOC, they all have kind of been spearheading this and bringing everybody together. I'm not sure exactly how proposals came about and figures came about, but, you know, the ones that we received from the RFP had about three hundred thousand dollars, and after we kind of decided to go with the Beacon Center and the MAP Center, we asked the MAP Center and their, their organization to kind of reformulate their budget based on their amount.
Kendall, based on your knowledge of this program, is the goal to get, the goal to me is not to put homeless people in a temporary bed, the goal is to get them into permanent housing and?
Correct, correct.
So that is, that's part of this program, right?
That is the goal, but, you know, as Commissioner Sankey said, I, I think that obstacle that we have to get over, while we're providing service and while we're getting people back on their feet, we do have to have a place for them to go in the meantime, and that's some, that's the obstacle we're trying to jump currently.
So we're going to move that to next agenda, and then?
But Doug, I'm going, I know you want to move it to next agenda, but I'm going to say this, we can't keep moving everything to next agenda on far as this ARPA money. We've got to start making some decisions, far as with homelessness and the violence prevention. We got to, we can't keep tabling everything, because you, we're in 2024, and you guys were doing this before I came along, and I've been here a year now, and we still have table and everything. So we've got to sit down, and whether we got to do it together as a county, or whether we got to do it with the city, whatever we've got to do, we've got to ensure that this money is spent for our citizens, and we can't keep tabling, and I just want to go on the record with that, because we keep tabling, 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 and time is running out.
No, I, I certainly, Ms. Chairman, I certainly concur with that, that posture that Ms. Ziegler has, has, is maintaining. And, you know, we've been talking, and I think, if the record will reflect, that I've been concerned for a long time about dragging our feet, not just on this particular initiative, but the sewer situation for Madison Park, the critical home repair. So, yeah, you know, dragging our feet is certainly, I think.
I need a status update on that critical home repair.
If I might, I mean, I've been listening to this. I don't think anybody's dragging their feet. If anybody's dragging their feet, it's the people who've been in charge of the situation. I mean, I've been around this thing for the whole, the whole period of it, and the communication has been actually nil, zero. No, I know absolutely nothing about what they're doing, because the city has taken it on its own to try to spend all of the money and decide how the money's going to be spent without the inclusion of this commission. That's the real issue, if you want to know the real issue. So the issue is not sitting on the funds. The issue is being able to get together and decide together how much you're going to spend, because if it's two million, one million of it came from this commission, and if the city want to spend money the way they want to spend money, then they spend their million the way they want to spend their million, and we're spending our million the way we want to spend ours. And if we want to spend it on creating new, new beds, Tara was in here the other night. I suggested we put her in our budget. But we, we're going to have money. We have a million dollars that we're about to put into a pool that, that all this talk didn't make it clear to me how it's going to help homeless people that, that's out there in the cold at night to get a bed. So that's, that's my bottom line. The reason why I would go along with putting it off until we get clarity on how this money is going to be spent, is because we haven't gotten it in the past, and we don't have it now, and just giving the money to say we did it when the situation failed. Well, we gave them the money, but it failed. That's not it. I want to make sure that the money is going where we intended for it to go, and I'm not sure now. So I have absolutely no problem with tabling, as long as it needs to be table, until we get clarity and we get better communications on how these funds are being spent. The same is true with the, with the community centers. The community center situation, it flopped, and people are trying to bring the, blame the county on that. Well, in a way, I guess they can, because when it came before the county, the vote was three to two to kill a, a, a nice community center project, and that was orchestrated by the city. So enough already. You know, I'm not voting for, to spend any money until I know where that money is going to go. And, and the one way that we can really know where it's going to go, if we took it and spent it ourselves and directed it ourselves, instead of having some group meet somewhere and decide how these funds are going to be spent. All those decisions made on the community centers, all those decisions made on the violence prevention and the homeless, they've been made without any, my input, and, and it sounds like they didn't have very much of yours.
Well said, Commissioner Harris, well said.
Florence, well, move it to the next agenda, and then during this next two weeks, Kendall, if you could spearhead getting us a little bit more detailed budget, where the money's going, how it's going to be spent between all these organizations, and kind of what the plan is, and then two weeks from now, when it comes up, we'll decide then if we want to move it to a future agenda to get more information, or if we're comfortable with voting. Fair enough?
Yes, sir.
That way it covers everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay.
We'll go to the items to be considered in the information session. Sheriff Cunningham?
Happy New Year to those of you all I hadn't spoke to this morning, so it's great to see your smiling faces, and that's what I love to come down here and see every day. Not you, Doug. Not you.
He wants some unfunded jobs, y'all.
Yeah.
Item number two is to consider an unbudgeted position. Phil requests for a crime gun analyst.
Yeah. With that being said, Carrie, come on down. This is my gun crime analyst. We hired her. She came in as a dispatcher for us, and she went off to the ATF. She's been certified, trained, and so you don't find this, this is something that's been built. She is a person that we built from scratch, sent her off to the schools. Now, when we start talking about gun violence in our communities, not only does she go out and, and work some of the crime scenes, but she's able to collect these shell casings, the projectiles, enter them into the database. Anytime we have a firearm that comes in our possession, I don't care, we stop you, we arrest you, we get a gun out of your car, your weapon will be test fired, and we will enter all that information into our database. She does all of that as well, and I'm just glad to be able to have a person of her caliber, graduated from Troy, came in into the law enforcement arena, and not only did she come in, she took it to the next level. When you find a young female that can get a firearm and can go out and test fire them, and then come back and put all that information into the, the national database, this is how we solve crime. We don't solve crime just because somebody shot somebody, but now we're solving crimes because we can tell if that gun was used in Montgomery, if it was used in Mobile, Cleveland, Washington DC. We can trace that weapon by us being able to put this information into the database. So without further ado, I want Carrie to say, at least let you all know what she does and, and about the national database.
So I recently come back from Huntsville from my correlation school, so now I can make the matches for myself. Like he said, if we match them from Huntsville to DC to Montgomery, I can do that myself. We recently, I think I reached seventeen leads, and I just matched someone's casing from their actual slide to our test fire to the actual crime scene, and I just did that within the last week.
Sheriff, so is this another position besides what Carrie's doing, or is this is the position that you're talking about?
No, this is the position.
Okay, and you were a dispatcher, right? So you replaced the dispatcher, right, already?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Once she get moved into this position, that, this is her only job, is working.
So you're still dispatching now, but you?
Oh, she's doing this now.
You're doing this now, okay.
So how are we, I mean, how, how were we doing this prior to her being qualified for this? What were we doing? How were we getting?
It wasn't being done. See, the city got the, the Niven system.
I mean, who did the ballistics?
We have to send them off to the state.
Yeah, and that's the, so they were doing what, they were doing what she's doing now?
No, not really, because they weren't entering everything into the ATF's national database. Now, we got a database, and she goes over to the city, and she enters all of our stuff into the national database, so that anytime a weapon is used in a crime, and if it's in that system, we can tell if that shell casing, she can go out and we can get a shell casing, and we can say, this same weapon was used in Mobile, or it was used down in Florida at a drive-by shooting, or it was used here. But now, when we get a suspect, we can tie him or her to more crimes because of that weapon. That's what she's doing now.
So it's being done, but?
It's being done by agencies that have, yeah, and now you're starting to see Auburn, I think they're getting a system, Birmingham is getting a system, I already have one, Tuscaloosa is, most of your larger cities now are getting a Niven system so that they can go ahead and start entering these firearms, so that we can start getting matches and getting hits on these guys and girls around here thinking, you can just go out and shoot and spray. Now we're collecting that information, we're putting it in the system, and if we catch you with that gun, we know who did it.
Does that account for, what, what, what do you call those firearms that not traceable?
Well, yeah, because all, all firearms are pretty much traceable. I ain't going to get into, but all firearms are pretty much traceable. You're talking about a, a 3D image weapon and all that? The, the barrel, once it fires off a round, it, it has a certain circulation and where the firing pin strikes it, and that's where she looks at it under a microscope, enters it into the system, so that we're calculating, and we know that this, that 3D image weapon fired this weapon, or fired this round, the shell casing. So, and that's how you got to start somewhere, and this is where everybody's going to.
Can, can this young lady's position be funded through grants from the Department of Justice?
Nobody's going to fund that. They, they'll help fund you with getting the, the system, and we got a system in this area, and I think, how many entries have you made so far?
Over six hundred.
Over six hundred, and that's collecting, test firing, and just loading them into the system.
Any other questions? Carrie, I applaud you for taking the initiative to better yourself and to do this. So it's just be on the next agenda.
Thanks, sir. Bye. Watch yourself. And I think we had another one.
One is not enough. He wants.
Item number three is to consider an unbudgeted position. Phil requests for a groundskeeper for the Sheriff's Office.
Yeah, this is for our firing range. Y'all know at the firing range, we got three buildings. We've been cutting the grass, but now I got my captain out there that's retiring, and we're having to move people around, and so therefore, we got a void. So with us keeping the grass cut, not only keeping the grass cut, but cleaning the bathrooms, cleaning the kitchen, keeping all that stuff going, it's starting to be, become an issue. And so we were looking for some breathing room by getting somebody to come out and assist. We'll still have to come in and assist and help, but it won't be just a burden on one person, and you're running four, five hundred people through a building, you know, a month having classes.
Don't, don't we have a county crew that cuts the grass for the county?
Yeah, we, we just, I, I discussed that with Sheriff this morning prior to the meeting, about the county crew maybe adding that under contract, and, and also the cleaning. You know, we have a group that does the cleaning for our building, and all county buildings may be adding that.
Yeah, I don't think that needs to be in the sheriff's.
So we want to look at that probably a little closer before we, we move further on this one. So that's, Florence, can we explore that like we talked about this morning, and then if, we can't make that happen through the contracts or something, we can come back and revisit on that one. Vice Chairman Sankey?
I was just curious, I, I know the sheriff has a lot of innovative type approaches that he uses, particularly with the inmates. I, the inmates are not able to do any of that?
I don't think we can use inmates for their county sentence. We probably got five county sentenced inmates, so we, we don't get county sentenced inmates. The majority of people were in our jail waiting to go to prison.
I don't think we want to do that.
Yeah, I was just curious.
I was curious, county sentenced inmate, what is a county sentence?
Those are ones that are charged with a low-line felony. Instead of the judge sentencing them to prison, they'll sentence them to the county jail, and then in return, those that are sentenced to the county jail, you can utilize them to do work details. Pretty much what you see, the ones in the city picking up trash. Pretty much what you see, the ones in the city picking up trash, they're sentenced to the municipal jail and you can use them or pretty much the ones that you see that are sentenced to DOC and you see them out doing work-related stuff because they're sentenced to DOC and part of their sentence is that you will be able to do work. And with ours, we just don't have any county sentenced inmates that you can use to go out on details.
And those county sentenced inmates, are they normally shorter-term?
Yeah, yeah, because that's somebody gonna be there for a year or less.
Yeah. All right, so we're, we're gonna hold off on moving that one forward until we get some more information.
All right. I think that's it, wasn't it? Well, thank y'all.
Florence, we need to move on with that.
One, one, two.
Okay. Well, since y'all were talking about homeless, I want y'all to give a, a shout out to all of these county employees that helped with the, the angel tree that we did. We went over to Friendship and we went to, to the Dulham House, we went to AIM and we gave out those gifts and plus at Friendship that, that we had a Christmas party, we, we served them food. So we had a real good time and it, it just wasn't the sheriff's office, it was county employees. Everybody came together to make that a success and you can't say enough about our county employees getting involved. We talk about issues all the time, but when we see something that's a need and we get behind it, normally the county employees will come out and they get behind it. So I like to commend them and say thank you for those. We didn't give them used clothes, we gave them new clothes. It means something when you can open up a present and you're getting a brand-new pair of blue jeans and a brand-new pair of shoes and socks and underwear. That means a lot. And I mean, if you could've just seen their faces, it lets you know that you did something good.
Any idea, the numbers, how many people we helped, you helped?
Uh, we had thirty men at the Friendship and then we had the ladies at the, at the Veterans House, which, Ms. Browder, and I forgot, how many we had at the other house, Wes? The ladies, we had like twenty altogether? Yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, right. I, I mean, I wanna commend the employees for that, that, that contributed and helped, but I wanna commend you and your department, cause this, this isn't the only thing that your outfit, you and your group leads. I mean, anything that's gonna be helpful to the community, it seems like the sheriff department is pretty much out front on it and-
And I appreciate y'all.
Taking the lead on this for the last few years and I want you to know that I really appreciate that.
Well, thank you.
This commission appreciates it.
I know I come to y'all a lot, but at the same time, I'm coming to you all and it ain't for me, it's for making sure we give it back to them.
We give you a hard time, but it's all in, you get most of what you want.
I know.
You know, it opened my eyes when I went to the Friendship when you had the, was it Christmas or Thanksgiving?
Thanksgiving.
Some of the, the people in there, I actually knew a couple-
Yeah.
That I'd grown up with in the same neighborhood and it kinda really opened my eyes because they were homeless now, but one in particular used to be a business owner and it just takes one dramatic change in their life. It could've been substance abuse or divorce or whatever it was and now all of a sudden this guy that, that I could really relate to-
Oh, yes.
Was there, so I appreciate-
Well, thank y'all. Keep, keep, we're, we're gonna continue to work together and try to improve our community, so thank y'all.
Regina Walker. This is item number four.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a non-match grant for some equipment, a E911 grant that Regina's gonna apply for. Non-match for some equipment at our dispatch center.
All right.
Yeah, that, um, it does remind me now that Gary, Gary Baron with EMA passed away. I think everybody aware of that? Yeah, I know, made up, just made me trigger it in my mind when you said that about dispatch and all, so.
Yes, sir.
So that'd be next agenda.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
You know, Regina didn't come down here and talk to us, I don't know why. She, you know, she was honored recently. Regina, come on down.
Regina, you gotta stand up.
You, you know, and, and I know if you know her, you, you, you know that you can't ask her to do something and expect her to just do what you asked her and quit. She's, she's gonna outperform in every, every time you ask her to do something, she's gonna make sure that it's completely done and that everything is taken care of. And she was recently honored as, as a neighborhood hero, community hero?
Yes, sir.
What was it?
What was it?
It was, it was a people to watch for, for the work with Habitat.
But it's Montgomery advertising.
Montgomery advertising.
Montgomery advertising. It just, it just laid out the things that she's doing for her community and you know, you know it's in her, you know that's the way she is because every time, since she's been here. She came here working as a foot sheriff department, uh, doing grants just for the sheriff department, but her work was so impressive and now she's doing it for the entire county. And not only that, she'll help you with anything else that you have going on. So when I read that article in the paper, I said they got her dead right. They picked the, the right person because I know whatever you get in behind, whatever you're asked to do or whatever God puts on your heart needs to be done, it's gonna be done, it's gonna be done well. And I wanna say congratulations to you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. I'll save my comments. Thank you. I appreciate it. It was, it was quite an honor. I have always had a servant's heart and for someone to think enough of you to say, hey, of all the people that you have here in Montgomery doing great work selflessly, to be selected was one of the greatest honors of my life and I'm grateful. And I have some comments later because Mark and I have a presentation for the additional work that we're doing with Habitat. But Commissioner, you're exactly right. I don't get behind anything I don't believe in and I truly believe in Habitat and I actually have Sheriff Cunningham to thank for nominating me for their board before I left working for him. He knew I was passionate about helping people in affordable housing, so thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, Regina?
Yes, sir.
Florence, how much more we got? We don't have a whole lot left, do we?
We have Phil Brown.
Okay, well, we'll come back to you.
Hey, this is no brainer here.
Good morning. I'm here to request that the commission would approve an irregular salary increase for a potential employee. This person has over fourteen years of experience and so I'm asking that you all would approve that. She's a case manager currently for Carestar. And if you all approve it, I'm asking that you waive rules. This position has been vacant since August.
What's she gonna do now? What, what?
She'll be, she'll be supervising our domestic violence caseload.
And you wanna bring her in where?
At Step Twelve. She's currently making forty-six thousand dollars at her current job.
Okay. I don't, I don't have any objection.
Any other questions or comments? I would personally prefer not to know the person's name-
Okay.
-in the future. I don't really wanna know the name. I just wanna know position and qualifications and-
Okay.
I don't know this person, but I, I don't, I don't like seeing people's names sometimes, so.
That's fine.
So that'd be the next, well, you asked to waive rules, right?
Right.
So it's something you need now, right?
Right, the, the position has been vacant since August, so.
And she's ready to come?
Domestic violence needs somebody in charge.
Has she left her other job yet?
Not yet. She's waiting on you all to approve it and then she's gonna leave it.
That's why I don't wanna see her name down there. Changed her mind or something. Any objection to waiving rules?
No objection here.
Okay, thanks, Phil.
All right, thanks.
That's all the items for the information session.
Uh, Mark, Regina, you wanna come on and, cause y'all were gonna do it at the, at ten o'clock, I guess? Was that when y'all were gonna do it?
Yeah.
Are you prepared now? Is that okay with the commission? We'll go ahead and, if we don't have anything else, we've got about twenty minutes. While they're doing that, we do have, after the formal session, we do have the meeting with the-
Exit conference with the examiners.
And I will say, while we got just a few minutes here, last night I got a text around twelve forty in the morning. Former sheriff Dan Jones passed away. Many of y'all probably remember Dan Jones. He was sheriff before DT Marshall was sheriff. So you had Dan, Jones, DT, and now Sheriff Cunningham, which makes Sheriff Cunningham the last surviving sheriff in Montgomery County. But Dan passed away last night at the, one of the local hospitals.
Okay, so, and I think we're gonna build on what Sheriff Cunningham was talking about in projects that you get behind. So in December, Montgomery Habitat hosted a Christmas luncheon and this is the photo you see here. The luncheon was to really thank our board members, thank elected officials from the city and the county that support Habitat all year long, but also to thank the hard-working employees and for them to meet our next potential homeowner that's in the hopper. I'll let Mark talk a little bit more about the church that made a presentation. They are across the street from the last house that we dedicated on Sussex and found out about the work and wanted to get involved. And the additional photos you'll see are from a volunteer project that sheriff and I was just sitting back there talking, one county commission meeting and Mark had gotten some pricing on painting the inside of one of the homes we own on Miller Fuller and it was cost prohibitive. It was about eight thousand dollars and sheriff said, we can come out there and do that. So on December sixteenth, he did. So I'll let Mark start and I'll be his official clicker.
Hey, good morning. Happy New Year to all the commissioners. Mark Hall here with Habitat for Humanity. Yes, as Regina, and I wanna just say real quick, there is not a better board president for, for this organization than Regina Walker. She is totally involved and you stole my thunder a little bit, Commissioner Harris, when you presented her with, uh, recognized her with the Montgomery Advertiser. And I have to give credit where credit's due. Our community outreach director, Cedric Varner, came up with the idea. I seconded that motion to, to recognize her for all the good work she's doing for, for Montgomery Habitat and pushing us forward to where we're more involved and then you don't have to, I don't have to come up here and tell you, you know already what we're doing and we're trying to get to that point. So, yes, our next house, the one we did prior, let me just speak on that real quick. At forty-two oh four Sussex, we, we did a house in April of twenty twenty-three and the, the church across the street came up with the idea, do we have anybody that was worthy of some Christmas help? So they wanted to present maybe a deserving family with some Christmas incentive. So they presented at our Christmas luncheon, Ms. Tiara Moore and her family with a five hundred dollar check to go to Christmas and help with her, her children, which was a great gesture. So as you see in the picture, that is, you know, a lot of, you see Chief Richardson and, you know, and, and a bunch of, I think, Kendall, please, don't let me miss anybody. I know Commissioner Sankey's there, Commissioner Singleton was able to come. And I know, look, that's a busy time of year. I know a lot of y'all would love to have come, but y'all had previous obligations, so we understand. But a lot of our staff members are there that make Habitat run smoothly and I couldn't do it without them. Anybody I missed there? Some of our board members as well, our, our new board members. So if we can, so moving forward, a house at eight thirty-seven Miller Fuller Drive is the next house we're looking forward to presenting, where we kinda got a target date of early April and we have a candidate ready to, to accept that, that house. So as Regina said, about seventy-five hundred, eight thousand dollars was designated for the cost of painting the interior of the house. So, you know, through our talks with Regina and Sheriff Cunningham, they offered to come out and paint the interior of the house and I think roughly fifteen representatives, I think, came out on a Saturday morning and really just blew, blew my expectations away. Painted the, the interior of the house and we got done with, I don't know, we were there about three hours, which I had it designated for about five to six hours, but they just really got after it. And so it was good, knocked that out as far as a budget line item. So it saved us a lot of money and, and time. So I just wanna thank them for all that you do. I know y'all are very involved with the community and just to have you on my side is, is a great asset. So thank you very much to, to that. Regina, anything else you wanna add?
And this will be the end of Habitat. As a result of all the PR we've been getting for Habitat, God has truly blessed the organization. Ashley Furniture called. We're getting a huge, huge donation from them. I was able to talk with Mark on Friday and look at the manifest. It's gonna be everything that Ashley sells, living room furniture, bedroom furniture, mattresses, you name it, we'll have it. We're gonna begin to get the first part of that donation this week.
Yes, in fact, when I leave here, I'm gonna see about delivery.
And so we'll get it in, in, in small increments, but the store is also full and it's brand-new furniture. A few of the mattresses probably were on the showroom, other than that, and everything we, Mark, is affordable. And as you know, anything we sell in the restor is funding to help us do what we do. We still have those four lots on Miller Fuller that has the infrastructure that we need to develop to put families in homes. Also, we're making room in the store because, can we mention that, can I?
Absolutely.
Warren Everett donated, they're moving, and they had beautiful furniture and they donated as much as we can hold of their furniture to Habitat. So we had conference tables, everything you would find in a nice upscale office. We have that as well in the store. So if you haven't gone by Habitat, we're open again to the public tomorrow at eight AM. I encourage you to go by there. If you're looking for furniture, you know someone looking for furniture, tell them to go by there and, and see and this is a way that they can help us fulfill our mission of putting families in homes.
And also Regina, I know Mark's working with Paul Hodges, Hodges Warehouse to help with storing some of this, maybe in trailers or whatever, so I kinda wanted to give a shout out.
And thank you for that.
Yeah, for him helping. I was hoping you showed a picture of Sheriff Cunningham, cause I saw one when he was painting and I-
Oh, it's the one where he sent, he and Mark sent you?
Yeah, he looks lily-white, whiter than me in the picture, so he might must-
That mean he was working and got some paint on it.
I've never seen somebody have so much paint on one person. He had paint everywhere.
But thank you. Thank you guys so much. Thank you for supporting the mission of Habitat and what we do.
What does it cost? I know it's not, you can't put an exact number, but estimated cost for one person to have a, a house from start to finish?
You mean stick build or rehab?
Stick build and then rehab. I know rehab's hard to say.
Stick build, right now Montgomery is what, one thirty a square foot? Somewhere around there?
That's pretty good. If you can do it for one thirty a square foot, that's, that's doing pretty good.
For the four lots, we have the infrastructure, it's the most, one of the most expensive parts and that's already in the ground now. When we're talking about property acquisition and other things, once we go past these four lots, then that cost will go up.
Are we all getting funding now?
I'll let Mark tell you that.
Well, as she mentioned, our restor is something, you know, there's a lot of great organizations and they keep everything going, but we're providing a permanent solution to these families in affordable housing. So our funding really comes from, the restor is our main, is our main steady flow of, but we also, you know, we ask county commission, the, the city and, but we, we get, we apply for grants periodically throughout the year. I know Valley Bank has been a big contributor for what we do and we've, First United Methodist Church has always been a supporter of Habitat. They give a quarterly tithe and, and there's so many more, I could go on, but they're small increments and they all help. And there's so many more, I could go on, but they're small increments and they all help. They, every bit helps. But we're looking to really get those four lots built and put families in those houses.
Where are the four lots, Mark? Do you know, where are the four lots?
Well, the four lots that we're referring to are on Millard Fuller, on, you know, right off Alabama River Parkway in New Hope Village.
Anybody got any questions?
I'm just curious, what is the average square foot per home? You said a hundred and thirty dollars per square foot. What is the average square foot per home?
Well, the houses, the, and on that, on that particular street are roughly fourteen hundred to sixteen hundred square foot. But the one we're currently doing now is a four-bedroom, two-bath, which are typical, I would say, average is three-bedroom, two-bath. That's what we try to accommodate. But the one we're doing that you see in these pictures is a four-bedroom, two.
And the people moving into the houses put some investment into it themselves?
Right, we don't, we don't give homes away, obviously. But they have sweat equity hours that they have to meet. It's roughly four hundred hours, but they can meet that with all their family. If they bring four family members and they work, you know, they all add up each hour by each family member. So they can bring the family, work on a home and accomplish that four hundred sweat equity hours quicker.
Thanks, Mark.
Any other questions? Okay, thank y'all so much, I do appreciate it.
Thank y'all for all, thank you for what you're doing.
Florence, anything else? Any other commissioner have anything they wanna mention? Is anybody's name on the list back there? We got a couple of minutes. Oh, is it? Well, we're gonna take a recess for five minutes, we'll start at ten o'clock sharp.